Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This public hearing sponsored by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary is now hereby convened. On the agenda, on Monday, May 4th, at 0900, we have three proposed measures. One is Bill Number 79-33COR, which is relative to creating a category of privileged communications between victim and victim advocates. We have Bill Number 77-33, relative to the use of funds deposited into the prison industries revolving fund, sponsored by Senator Espada, Speaker Wampat, and Senator Blas. And just going back to Bill Number 79, that was sponsored by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. And then a third item on the agenda is Bill Number 73-33, which is relative to strengthening public safety efforts through the integration of surveillance cameras within Guam emergency reporting system, sponsored by Senator Morrison and Senator Frank Blas Jr. For the information of public in compliance with the open government law, initial notification was forwarded to the stakeholders as well as to our partners in the media on the 24th of April, and with a print in one of our print publications, Mariana's Variety, on Thursday, April 23rd, highlighting the three proposed measures that will be discussed this morning, as well as the oversight hearing for the Guam Police Department this afternoon at 2:00 P.M. Also, a subsequent second notice was forwarded and distributed to all the stakeholders, inclusive, again, of our media partners, on the 29th of April. And the print, once again, was forwarded with the adjusted timeline or changed date. Originally, this public hearing was scheduled to be held on Friday last week, but because of session and legislative activities, we were able to move it over, move it forward to today's date. So with the changed date, inclusive, the print media and the Mariana's Variety was printed on Tuesday, April 28th. Aside from that, I'd like to go ahead and recognize my colleagues who have joined us here this morning. Senator Espada, thank you very much for joining us. Senator Tony Ada, thank you, Senator. And I believe we are expecting a couple of other senators to join us. The first item is Bill Number 79, as was mentioned a little earlier, if I can.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, call for a temporary recess. Just, we don't have the bills in front of us at this point, so it'd be possible, just to call a recess, so we can get the bills.
Very second recess. I apologize. This public hearing on the proposed measures that was previously discussed is hereby reconvened. Thank you, Senator Espada, for noting that copies were not distributed to the senators. In light of the agenda, we will proceed with Bill Number 79-33. Just prior to receiving testimony, I just want to highlight that the Attorney General, although she does have representatives from her office here, she did communicate with the chair and requested a follow-up discussion on this particular matter, Bill Number 79, which is an act to add a new Chapter 163 to Title VIII of the Guam Code annotated, relative to creating a category of privileged communications between victim and victim advocates, sponsored by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. If I can invite the following individuals, please, to join us up front. Sister Trini Pangolinan, Kathy Moylan, Adriana Reyes, and Scott Wade. If I can invite all four of you, if you would like to provide testimony. If you're not going to provide testimony, then we understand. And I want to thank you for signing in on this measure. Okay, then let me add to the list. Mr. Phil Tidinko from the Attorney General's Office, Jackie Cruz, and Pauline Camacho. Please, if you can join us up front. I understand, I guess Phil, Deputy Attorney General, Phil Tidinko will be representing the Office of Attorney General. I'd like to also, before I proceed, recognize Senator Mary Torres. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us this morning. As we discuss Bill Number 79, I would like to read the sponsor's transmittal that was just received by the committee this morning. It reads, "Dear Chairman Ogun, Hafadeh, I want to begin by thanking you for holding today's public hearing relative to Bill Number 79-33COR, an act to add a new Chapter 163 to Title VIII of the Guam Code annotated, relative to creating a category of privileged communications between victim and victim advocate. Unfortunately, I cannot be here with you today because of a previously scheduled commitment to speak before the Guam Nonprofit Congress at the Guam Community College. In my statement this morning, I would be remiss if I did not also thank Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. Drafted in consultation with her office and introduced at the beginning of National Crime Victims Week, Bill Number 79-33COR recognizes what many other jurisdictions have known for decades, that victims, their counselors, and advocates deserve an environment built on trust protected by the force of law. Both courts and legislatures have acknowledged the importance of confidentiality in promoting an effective counseling relationship. The U.S. Supreme Court in Jaffe versus Redmond, 518 U.S. 1/1996, observed that effective psychotherapy depends upon an atmosphere of confidence and trust in which the patient is willing to make a frank and complete disclosure of facts, emotions, memories, and fears. Because of the sensitive nature of the problems for which individuals consult psychotherapists, disclosure of confidential communications made during counseling sessions may cause embarrassment or disgrace. For this reason, the mere possibility of disclosure may impede development of the confidential relationship necessary for successful treatment." Likewise, the Illinois Supreme Court noted, "If a rape crisis counselor could not guarantee confidentiality to a victim, the effectiveness of rape crisis centers would be undermined." New Jersey's semi-absolute victim privilege law specifies the legislature's intent in enacting a law that states counseling of violence and victims is most successful when the victims are assured their thoughts and feelings will remain confidential and will not be disclosed without their permission. Confidentiality should be accorded all victims of violence who require counseling, whether or not they are able to afford the services of private psychiatrists or psychologists. Moreover, the U.S. Department of Justice's proposed model legislation contains a findings and purposes section that outlines the need to protect victims' confidential communications with their counselors. This act recognizes the important role of counseling in the ability of victims to recover from the trauma of the crime and in the achievement of legal safeguards and of the social and economic assistance essential to achieve protection from further criminal assault. Without assurances that communications made during the counseling relationship will be confidential and protected from disclosure, victims will be even more reluctant to seek counseling or to confide openly to their counselors and to explore legal and social remedies fully. This bill is intended to prevent further victimization, but its protections are not absolute. Specifically, the communication is not privileged if the crime victim advocate knows that the victim will give or has given perjured testimony, or if the communication contains exculpatory material. As such, I hope that the chairman, his committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and those in attendance today will join me in making this measure better where necessary, allowing it to move to the floor during the next available session. Sincerely, Benjamin J.F. Cruz, sponsor of Bill Number 79-33." I'd like to welcome the Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Tom Ada. Thank you, Senator, for joining us this morning. Officer Wade, if you can, please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Senators, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lieutenant Scott Wade of the Guam Police Department Auxiliary Services Division. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of my unit, specifically the Domestic Assault Response Team of the Guam Police Department. We are in support of Bill 79-33. Traditionally, cases are addressed from a law enforcement and prosecution standpoint in which the investigation and successful prosecution is the main focus. The reason we support this bill is it follows the ideal and philosophy of the Domestic Assault Response Team, which is victim first. The bill allows the victim to have a say and control in the communications between them and the advocates. The victim and advocate relationship is fragile and based on support and trust. To be subpoenaed and compelled to testify on intimate and personal matters shared between the two is difficult and makes the process a bit cumbersome. This bill allows the victim the ability to make decisions on those communications and what can be shared, which will allow the victim to be more open and direct with our advocates, which will allow our advocates to address the needs of the victim more specifically and more directly. So the Guam Police Department Domestic Assault Response Team is in support of Bill 79-33.
Thank you very much, Officer Wade, for joining us this morning and providing testimony on behalf of the department. I'd like to, before I recognize Deputy Attorney General Tidinko, if I can invite Karen Carpenter, please, if she would like to join us up front for testimony. General Tidinko, you may proceed with your testimony. Just identify yourself for the record and proceed.
A volunteer with victim advocates reaching out, and Erica Suss.
Thank you for joining us this morning. I take it, Deputy Attorney General?
Good morning, Buenos, Chairman and Senator Frank Ogun. Good morning to all of you, Senators, Senator Torres, Senator Tom Ada, Senator James Espada, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Tommy Morrison. On behalf of Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson and the Office of Attorney General, we thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. If I may read her written testimony into the record for Bill 79-33. "Hafadeh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, the Office of the Attorney General stands in full support of Bill 79-33, an act to create a victim advocate privilege. This law stems from discussions with community-based victim organizations that provide direct services to victims of crime. It would establish privilege over communications between a crime victim and advocates. The privilege is intended to give crime victims protection. It fosters trust in the relationship between a crime victim and the advocate. A victim can be assured that what is communicated to an advocate in the course of direct services, such as facilitating advice, providing supportive assistance, or direct counseling, will remain confidential. This privilege is similar to protections afforded an attorney-client or doctor-patient. It belongs to the victim. The purpose of the privilege over communications between a victim and an advocate is to protect communications from being revealed at any stage of a criminal investigation or judicial proceeding. It is a prohibition enforceable against both law enforcement and defense. There are certain limitations to the protected speech, such as where the advocate is informed the victim intends to engage in perjured speech. Most states have some form of victim advocate privilege. It is an important tool to build a trust between a victim and the advocate during the trauma of domestic violence, criminal sexual assault, and many other similar traumatic types of crime. We ask the committee for its full support of the proposed legislation signed the Honorable Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, Attorney General of Guam. And for the record, my name is Phil Tidinko, Chief Prosecutor for the Prosecutor Division, and I also join with the Attorney General and other members and stakeholders in support of the Vice Speaker Cruz's Bill 79-33. It is a needed piece of legislation and privilege. We need that law, and I think it will contribute immensely to the compendium of laws and services that are evolving in the protection of victims of crime rights. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Chief Prosecutor, and please extend our appreciation to the Attorney General for submitting testimony this morning. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I don't have written testimony, but victim advocates reaching out, too, is in full support of this bill. We feel it would really be an assistance for our victim advocates. Our President Julia Joey Heath was unable to be here today because she had a prior commitment, but I am on the board, and for our advocates, as they have said before, you know, when you're working with a victim, and we're crisis responders, so we're there, you know, very early on, and they need to be able to talk it out without fearing that somebody, you know, later down the line is going to say, "Well, you said this now, and then you said this later." If you know anything about trauma, victims don't tell their stories in a linear manner. They don't start here and then go here, here, here. They start here, and then they go there, and then they're to here, and, you know, because they're in that trauma situation. And so it's really important for the advocates to be able to listen and assist the victim without being concerned and the victim being concerned that maybe their words are going to be thrown back at them later.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carpenter, for your testimony this morning. I'd like to also welcome to the committee Senator Morrison. Thank you, Senator, for joining us this morning. Senators, any questions or comments with regards to Bill Number 79? Senator Espada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a simple question. Aside from the Attorney General's Office, and we appreciate your testimony, by the way, Ms. Carpenter, and thank you for being here. Between GPD and the AG's office, and of course, now we have Barrow, are there any other entities out there that might be victim advocate agencies? And if there are, could you just kind of spell them out for me, please, or maybe whatever you might know? Anybody can answer that question.
I know that Oasis has some victim advocates. I believe Gumamani does. Help me here, guys.
Sanctuary.
Sanctuary.
Alley Shelter.
Yeah, Alley Shelter. Yeah, so there's, you know, there's a variety of them in the community at different agencies that do help with the victims.
I guess the follow-up question to that, then, have, do you know of any examples where a person acting as a crime victim advocate does reveal or has revealed confidential or potentially confidential information that would be detrimental to them?
There's been some incidents where the victim advocates assigned to the Guam Police Department Victim Assistance Unit have been subpoenaed by defense attorneys and compelled to testify on communications between the victim and themselves during a course of a trial.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Just in line with the question that was just posed, now with the victim advocates, the way this legislation is written would also cover victim advocates and the other nonprofit organizations? Is that correct?
Yes, the definition of crime victim advocate includes private and public entities, so it's fairly broad.
Okay.
It means a person who is employed or authorized by a public or private entity to provide counseling, treatment, or other support assistance to crime victims.
Okay.
So that's a fairly broad definition, although I suppose you could make it broader or narrower depending on what the policy is here, but it seems pretty inclusive to cover both governmental and non-governmental entities.
Okay.
Or agencies.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for your testimony this morning. Senators, no other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is Bill Number 77-33, relative to the use of funds deposited into the prison industries revolving fund, and the sponsor, primary sponsor, Senator Espada. Senator Espada, if I can, first of all, let me invite Mr. Joe Sanogstein. Please, if you can, join us up front. The only individual that has signed up for this particular legislation at this time. And before we proceed with listening to your testimony this morning, Mrs. Sanogstein, I'd like to ask Senator Espada if he would like to have his brief presentation on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, several years ago, several terms ago, I introduced a bill that created the prison industries, which allows for Department of Corrections to implement programs that would help the inmates receive job training and skills development by developing them within the confines, or maybe even sometimes outside the confines of DOC. And again, at the time, it was meant to help, basically, the inmates gather some training and create some training for themselves and skills development. Also, it was to provide opportunities for them to earn some wages, and those wages that would be put into a fund, which would help several causes. One, I think 25% was supposed to be for payment of restitution to the victims. Another 25% was supposed to be for, I believe, for themselves, so they could buy supplies and whatnot while they are incarcerated, DOC. We're talking soap and shampoos and things like that. Again, so that there'd be some alleviation of the cost to DOC, and the prisoners would basically be paying for some of their own keeping. The funds were also meant to be, to pay the courts for any fines that may have been there, and then as well as to provide DOC some funds as well for personnel costs concerning prison industries. This bill, I'm excited to add this bill on, that basically, we know that right now up at DOC, the population consists of inmates and a large population of detainees. And we wanted to, the original bill, or the original law, as passed into law, addressed only that the prison industries would be for inmates. And with this, with this bill, we hope to add the detainees. We know that there are a considerable number of detainees up there who have been, who can be there from anywhere from a few weeks to even a year and maybe even longer. And so while they're incarcerated or being held, we wanted to add the detainees, so that, again, they could probably see what benefits might be there if they just employ themselves and really focus in on perhaps creating, developing their skills and maybe exposing themselves to some training that would be helpful to them, you know, once they do get out in the general population. So this bill adds the detainees to the inmate population. Another addition to the law is to allow that some of those funds generated by prison industries can also be used by the Department of Corrections to help train the personnel up there. So I think this is a good thing, and I'm very excited when the Director of Corrections, Mr. Sanogstein, sent his, some of his officers down on his behalf to talk about this. They were very excited about now really fully employing the prison industries concept. I know that they have a lot of exciting things that they're planning, and I just want to show full support for the further development of this. And so, like I said, I'd like to add the detainees on as beneficiaries of the prison industry programs that are going to be created by the director and his staff. And of course, we want to give them some more funding to help train their officers going forward. And that's the essence of the bill, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Mr. Sanogstein, please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Hafadeh, Mr. Chair, Senators, good morning. My name is Joe Sanogstein, and I am the Director for the Department of Corrections. I am very happy to be here this morning, and I want to thank the author of this bill, Mr. Jim Espada, for the opening remarks. I almost, no reason for me to testify, you said it all. Thank you, because in this day and age where funding is very difficult to come by, it is just smart to really be able to work with the legislature and this administration to find ways to leverage our ability and potential to be able to generate funds within our own agency. I've been working on this thing for a little bit over four years. I will tell you that we do have a very small scale of prison industry as we speak. And of course, reason behind that is because of our funding issue, but for some odd reason, we have to generate funds to get that program started. It started off very successful. We were able to sell our produce at Island Fresh, right here in Chalampago. But as we move forward, I tend to focus on other priorities that became a more reason to divert and focus, and that's the 1991 stipulated agreement between the United States and the territory of Guam. But in saying that, that does not stop the initiative of this bill moving forward so that we could be able to start building and creating the industry so that we could start, you know, making money. So with that said, Senators, if you could allow me, I would like to go ahead and read my testimony this morning. Salute as an Hafadeh, Chairman Senator Frank B. Ogun, and members on the Committee of Public Safety. I am Joe A. Sanogstein, Director of the Department of Corrections, and I am here to provide support for Bill 77-33COR, an act to amend Item A of Subsection 9090 of Chapter 99 Guam Code annotated, relative to the participation in prison industries, to amend Item B1 of Subsection 90.91, Chapter 99 GCA, relative to the use of funds deposited into the prison industry revolving fund. The First Amendment, or amended item, would allow detainees to participate in the prison industry program. As Jim alluded earlier, the law previous to this amendment only allowed inmates to actually engage in prison industry. With the rising numbers of detainees, more than 400 on a daily basis up at DOC, it is always, pretty much, the smartest way to go about using these people to help us produce and to help us, you know, make money, make the place better than them just hiding in their cells and doing nothing. We must be mindful that the conditions of the program is to allow the means for inmates to receive job training and skill development, to provide opportunities for the earning of wages, to be used to pay restitution to victims of crime, and payment of fines and court costs, and to provide additional means for funding certain recurring expenses of the department. Inmates will have the priority to participate in such a program, as it is understood that detainees are yet to have adjudicated through the court judgment. In saying that, again, many of these folks are released and they return, released and they return. Some of them are in there for just a few days, but some of them are in there for a year or two, or probably more. So why not use them for our advantage? The Second Amendment item to read, "Funds in the prison industry revolving fund may be used to purchase clothing for prisoners and detainees, food items for the dining facility, galley, catering services and equipment, medical dental supplies, prescription and over-the-counter medications, sanitary and hygiene supplies, and other pharmaceutical supplies for prisoners and detainees, including payment for prisoner-detaining maintenance costs in any off-island prison or medical institution, payment for overtime and related personnel costs for personnel specifically assigned to tasks involving the prison industry program, and in addition, for the training department of the Department of Corrections personnel. Amended language is funding can also be used for the training of personnel." That was not initially on the initial law. So with that said, such amended bill, while beneficial for rehabilitation, will also be a source to offset the large costs indirectly burdening hard-working taxpayers. That's what I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanogstein, for your testimony this morning. Senator Espada, any questions, comments? Senators, Senator Torres?
Director Sanogstein, I just want to ask, as I'm listening to your testimony, it seems that what you're describing is something far beyond what I understand as a prison industry. Can you tell me or describe for me what you envision as a prison industry? I mean, you've alluded to certain items that you've been able to sell and gain some proceeds with a neighboring market, but tell me, what is it about prison that you envision?
Senator, thank you for that question, and good morning. The prison industry could be a magnitude of many different elements involved. You know, farming, of course, is probably the most practical since we have a real estate that's good for farming, but then again, it's probably the simplest and the easiest concept of prison industry. When we say farming, of course, planting tomatoes, watermelon, the pigery farm that pigs were donated in the late '90s by one of our farmers, and that became something that the prisoners were able to, you know, use as part of their rehabilitation program. But in saying, you know, the pigs, as they grow, you know, we donate them to the mayors for special events. So, you know, it's a trade for trade, service for service. Others, we could also engage with the Department of Agriculture to help us with the plantation of vegetables. We want to engage with the University of Guam to bring their expertise to us to show our prisoners. prisoners and also our officers, you know, the best practice of farming, both from the livestock side of the house and also the growing of vegetables and fruits. But also, a couple of years ago, Peggy Denny, I like to say about two years ago, she was trying to engage me on a project, a huge project, where she actually had a grant, and all she was asking was for us to gather old pallets just to make dog houses. And I wasn't able to engage with Ms. Peggy Denny at that time because we were just overwhelmed, undermanned, and not enough manpower to be able to start that program. As simple as it is, I mean, there's, pallets are free, and thousands of them, you know, all over the place, but can we do that? Yeah, absolutely. We just have to focus on it and make it a reality to help, you know, agency to agency.
Senator Torres, answer your question.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to add to that, the other thing that I was impressed about, and I know that the Director has so many things that it's mine, but I know that throughout the years and in, that there are arts and crafts that are being generated, made out, in fact, made out of newspaper. In fact, the legislature has been a good customer of DOC to give away gifts to dignitaries who visit our island of arts and crafts that are being produced. And they've been very impressive. I've seen a big Spanish galleon created by DOC made out of newspaper, looks like wood but really is newspaper. I have myself a Proa that's in my office made by DOC. There are so many other things that can be done, but generally, and again, this is the conversation that will be continuing with the Department of Education and the Director's staff, what other programs and industries they might be able to participate in and help benefit the inmates and the population within the gates of DOC. So I'm sure there's so many different areas aside from food and dog houses that they would be looking at, and there were several that were mentioned to me in our meeting. So going forward, I look forward to its success.
Senator Espada, Senator Tonera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Director.
Good morning.
You know, I was just wondering, what is the compensation rate for an inmate who goes out onto these work, you know, these work programs?
I think, well, the ones that are actually on work release, normally it's the minimum wage.
The minimum wage?
Yes, and I like to say I have, I think, about four of them that's on that program. But normally, it's a minimum wage, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, it didn't. I was just wondering, because I think detainees fall under a different category, like you were mentioning. So I mean, you know, how does the wage an hour, you know, does it still apply to them or?
Yeah, and that's a good point, because if they're on the detainee status, we would probably not want to, you know, use them for that program. They won't be entitled unless the court allows them to. Only the inmates are entitled to that. But I just want to say, because in part of that, you know, the prison industry could be extremely very large, and what we've been trying to do is exploit the relationship with, let's say, GPA or GTA for us to be able to go out there and just get a strip of miles and miles of telephone poles that we could maintain, maintain the trees and maintain the lawn for them so that, you know, trees do not overgrown on the wires. Those are some of the things we're looking at, and I know when Ken Flores was still around, I engaged on him with taking that task, but he was offering me a gigantic tractor that I didn't want to take because I don't want to be liable for the maintenance, but he, the deal was for us to do maintenance and give us, you know, a decrease in cost for power. And so that was maturing, but then he decided to retire. But I want to pursue that because it's within the law, if I understood it right, that we could engage our personnel in some type of contract with other agencies to be able to utilize as a workforce, if you may. And that's the good advantage of that one bus that was donated by Senator Brandon McCready and Rudy Mantenani, that we could use that for the big workforce that we anticipate. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sure does. Thank you. And, you know, I think that expanding on that, you'd be able to, you know, who knows, one day put in a bid on a RFP and get DOC on the grid there to actually, you know, beat one. I mean, if they're out there already performing work, and I've seen them down at the Veteran's Cemetery or out on the streets doing some work for the village mayors, you know, if we can get them out there making some type of income to not only support themselves but also support the facility, I think it's a good way to go.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of the things that many folks has not seen, I do have small pockets of group of people going out, either helping the mayors, the school. I'll just let you know that I do have, like, eight people up at the Lempiaco Cemetery, the only public cemetery. I was there three weeks ago, and I was very disturbed that, you know, it's a burial ground, yet a lot of trash, the grass are overgrown. So even if we have to do it for free, but it's, again, for the service of the people. And you know what touches me? You know, these are people that are not very well financially off, right? So, you know, they look for the best place that they could bury their loved ones. I mean, when you see a plot there with a child that was, you know, didn't even have a chance to really see the world, but yet the plot was neglected, you feel for that. So as much as people don't know, I do send crews out there to help the public, anything that is within the law, to help so that not only do we, I would say it's not necessary to make money, but contribute to the community, because that becomes a rehabilitative thing, you know, things for these individuals, and that's, I see that as very important. So we're not seeing too much, but we're all over the place, believe it or not.
Yeah, thank you for your work up at the Lempiaco Cemetery. I know that has been a growing concern for, I believe there was Mr. Cruz that brought a lot of concerns about that cemetery. And, you know, maybe something that you can look at, if you guys are maintaining it, is to do some type of an agreement with Parks and Rec to where, should an inmate passes, because I know you're liable for those costs, and they're buried up at Tijuoc Cemetery, that that cost be offset by the work that you performed up there. So, you know, that's something that you can also look at, because I know they charge, I think it's $500, $500.
Around there, yes. Two to 500, yes, sir.
Yeah, so in that way, you know, you'd be able to offset that cost with the work that you perform, and that way, each agency has a win-win out of it. You're performing maintenance, but yet when you need to utilize it and you have an inmate that needs to be buried that's under your care and that you're responsible for that cost, that you'll be able to do that and not have the department put out that funding also for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Sinagastin. I believe there's an MOU already in place, right, the Department of Parks and Recreation?
There is.
Okay, how about these other, because what started with the, an agreement between DPR and DOC, I think many agencies saw the success of that program, and I think now you are assisting not only them, the Veterans Affairs Office, GVB, GVB in many aspects. Do you also have MOUs for those entities?
No, most of the work that we do is related to the mayors, the schools, the parks, Parks and Recs, and just GMH, Behavioral Health, skilled nursing unit, so, and also public health. So that's an ongoing project.
So how do you guys replenish your whip, your shindawas, and your equipment supplies to offer the service?
The mayors donate. They're responsible for the gas and the whips.
How about DPR?
Parks and Rec's the same thing.
GVB as well?
The GVB, well, we haven't really made much deal with them, but, you know, none of them hesitate to donate or help. All we're asking is that they get fed and just replenish the fuel and the whips.
Right. I just asked that question. I'm glad the program's still alive and that you are getting the necessary supplies and materials to keep the program going and that it's not coming out of your budget.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Senator Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Sinagastin, and I, you know, I just want you to know that for those times when you've gotten into hot water and whatnot, I've always been your supporter.
Thank you.
And I certainly commend you for the work that you've done. Quite frankly, I find, I find, you know, the, just the concept of this prison industries and somewhat problematic, for me at least. It's great that the inmates go out there and put in their sweat equity and are able to produce something, and then, but where I have a problem is when they, for example, then go to the store and they compete with the local farmers out there, then I have, then I find that rather problematic. In the same way, you know, for example, maintaining the vegetation out there for GPA, because otherwise, that could be work that a small business might have been able to get through a bidding process. So I find that problematic, you know? On the one hand, we want them to be productive and be contributing, but on the other hand, when it's taking, when it's taking jobs away from people who are out there trying to eke out a living, then I have, then, that's where I have a real dilemma with that. I certainly support the idea of providing them with a job training and kind of getting them ready for, you know, for when they go back out into the community, or going out there and, for example, even with the agricultural products, and maybe, you know, donating it and in return, their compensation would be maybe credits towards, you know, their time in prison. But when he starts competing with, because let's face it, I mean, if he was to put in a bid, his overhead, the overhead for the DOC inmates would probably be a lot lower and would always come out with a lower price. So this is something that, on the surface, sounds good, but I really would need to really think, you know, closely as to what are the implications to the private businesses, the small businesses that are also trying to survive. Thank you.
Can I just help you on that, Senator? And I thank you. This is Guam, there's plenty of work. I think I've never worked so hard until I return back to Guam, because I'm so excited. There's plenty of work, there's plenty of things to do, there's plenty of grass to cut, and plenty of trees to trim, and plenty of trash to pick. But I want to say this, that in lieu of the competition, I want to be able to rehabilitate and make these people taxpayers, so we, especially those hard-working taxpayers, don't continue to pay for their incarceration. So let's build them, donate whatever they could so that when they get out, and even while they're in, I'm sure that 25% that they're getting compensated for should be taxable. So the mindset is to allow them to prepare themselves and let them be taxpayers instead of the taxpayers paying for their incarceration. And I hope that makes sense to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sinagastin. Any other comments on this proposed measure, Senator Espada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I understand the good senator's concern about competing with the private industry. However, Mr. Chair, just a reminder, and I'm sure we're going to have at least a good discussion when this bill hits the floor on the merits of prison industry, but the fact is that prison industry is already in law. What we're doing here today is just amending the law so that it allows for the flexibility of allowing the Director to be able to make a call on whether certain detainees would be able to participate in prison industries, and also the amendment to the existing law is essentially to allow some of the funds that are regenerated for DOC to use for the training of its personnel, and that is really the focus of this public hearing and this bill. And again, the merits of prison industry is, I said, I think is right now a moot point because it is existing law, and I just want to make, state that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Espada. Thank you very much, Mr. Sinagastin, for your testimony this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is Bill Number 73-33, and it is an Act to strengthen public safety efforts through the integration of surveillance cameras with Guam Emergency Reporting System. If I can invite Chief Joe Weisennichl, if you can join us up front. And before we proceed with your testimony, I'd like to ask Senator Morrison, the primary sponsor of the legislation, to provide his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also committee members, for scheduling this public hearing. I also want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for also co-sponsoring this key legislation, and also Senator Frank Blas Jr. for our first Homeland Advisor for also taking part in co-sponsoring this legislation. Bill 73 was introduced to strengthen public safety efforts by integrating the use of video surveillance cameras within the Guam's E911 system. Bill 73 recognizes the urgency of integrating video surveillance cameras as a smart and inefficient approach to deterring, reporting, and responding to crime, medical, and other emergencies. Video surveillance cameras has a strong proven track record. Mr. Chair, I'll share some national examples. Chicago, cameras used is used as a very effective tool in the fight against gangs, guns, and drugs. While narcotic-related calls declined by 76%, serious index crimes declined by 17%, while non-index and quality-of-life crimes declined by 46%. Focusing on just narcotic-related crime revealed a decrease of 76%. At the same time, narcotic-related arrests declined by 3.3% on beats where police observation devices, cameras, were located, but increased by 151% on the beats immediately surrounding the pot beats. In Sacramento, the technology helped the California Highway Patrol to recover 1,524 stolen vehicles statewide in 2014 and led to 194 arrests. Video recordings are becoming a key investigative tool that lead to arrests following fatal shootings, robberies, and at local retail stores, et cetera. Installation of video monitoring systems on light rail trains and stations have also led to the arrest of the following virus criminal activity. Some local examples, the Young Pogut Market robbery, the Tumon condo man caught in camera trespassing, Bank of Guam Gigo robbery, Simon Sanchez high school break-in, Anigua mobile gas station robbery. Just some of the examples, Mr. Chair, of what this tool has been able to do to assist our law enforcement. Bill 73, with GFG, while GFG will remain the full authority, full authority over the E911 fund, one of the main objectives of Bill 73 will be to obtain the buy-in from GPD, mayors, Mayor's Council of Guam, GVB, Homeland Security, and other public organizations. Bill 73-33 also provides us with the opportunity to share resources, manpower, training, and collaboration. Perhaps GPD's reserves officers and Cape volunteers with the proper training could also be the primary part of this overall approach to integrating video surveillance cameras within Guam's emergency reporting system. Bill 73 also creates an opportunity to partner with DOE in the use in the school of surveillance cameras for the benefit of our schoolchildren, teachers, staff, and the villages they call their second home. Public Law 32-09 provided funding for the procurement of security cameras for all public schools that provided a win-win for DOE and law enforcement and the villages, and also created some partnerships between the neighborhood watch programs, between GPD and DOE. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I look forward to public testimony and to strengthen the legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison, as the primary sponsor of the legislation. Just for the information out of the members of the legislature, we do have written testimony from the Chief of Police. Chief Weisennichl, if you can go ahead and proceed.
Howdy, and good morning, Senator Uggan and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. Happy to be here to support Bill 73-33, and like the bill prior to me, Senator Morrison eloquently pretty much said everything that needs to be said. But just for the, to kind of preempt my testimony, I just want to make it clear that I believe that this bill, the primary purpose of this bill for us is to give us the authority to utilize these type of cameras in the execution of our mandates for public safety. On the Guam Fire side, it's to provide information to emergency responders as they respond in real time if we do get access to these cameras. in real time, if we do get access to these cameras. And on the law enforcement side, to also provide real-time information in the enforcement of laws and so forth in public settings. So I'll go ahead and read my testimony. Please accept this testimony in support to Bill 73 dash 33, contingent on the following recommendations. Bill 73 dash 33 seeks to amend Section 12304 of Article III, Chapter 12, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, to authorize the use of enhanced 911 emergency reporting system funds to procure surveillance cameras as part of Guam's emergency reporting system or the E911 system. Bill 73 dash 33 authorizes the Guam Fire Department and the Guam Police Department access to surveillance or security cameras for the purpose of public safety, which I believe is important. However, the Guam Fire Department is the steward of the E911 fund, and we must protect it to ensure that it is appropriately used for its intended purpose. We have made major progress in updating, upgrading, and replacing the current E911 system, and have a direction to build a communication center that would house a new E911 system, LAN mobile radio system, and public safety broadband network. Any alteration to this course will set back years of hard work, and therefore, it is GFD's request that the following amendments be made. First, Page 2, Line 1 dash through 3, strike out "in collaboration with the Guam Police Department and the other public safety agencies" in its entirety. Number 2, Page 2, Line 6, strike out "shall" and replace with "may." The Guam Fire Department is committed to the overall safety and security of our island, and I can assure you that all necessary stakeholders and community members will be included in all plans going forward. Thank you very much for hearing me today.
Thank you very much, Chief Siniklis. And certainly from the chair, I understand the need for you to continue to preserve the fund and ensure that the 911 system is improved over the course of the upcoming years. So I appreciate the ongoing effort in regards to that. Any questions or comments, Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Chiefs Siniklis, for your testimony. I also want to note, I know as stated earlier by the chairman, that GPD also provided testimony, and it's actually consistent with your request. So that's duly noted, we'll necessarily make, work with the committee to make these necessary changes. I also want to point to some of the discussions that were also made, that we are in the process. I think you also mentioned that we're very close to enhancing our 911 system. One of the questions that was brought up was, one of the, to me was, does this also involve the DINE network, or to ensure that we can have that ability to tap these cameras in necessary? So I know it's a new system, but I'm sure with the technology, given that this legislation is only providing for authorization, that will have the capabilities by integrating these cameras.
Yes, Senator, thank you for that question. Yes, in the specifications we have for the E911 system, it does allow for upgrades and improvements as needed. And with the current technology, I think it would be very simple to gain access to any type of surveillance cameras or security cameras, especially the cameras that are coming out nowadays, where they take advantage of IP addresses. I know on home security cameras, you can easily access it with your cellphone or smartphone, and they have real-time video footage of what's going on at home. So I think the same technology, and probably even better, will be used for public cameras.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. Senator Tonietta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, where are we at currently with the 911 system? Are we able to actually integrate this type of security camera with the current system?
I absolutely knew that this question was probably going to come up. The 911 procurement is, everything that Guam Fire Department can do is complete. It's been forwarded to the signature route, and it's currently sitting at BBMR, just finalizing the amount and the cost of the system, and what we can afford to use for an annual basis to support this system. Again, like I was saying earlier, yes, the system today, I would have to get back to whether it can access these cameras. Given that we do have access to internet at the current system, I believe it will, it can. And if not, it would be as simple as putting up a couple of more monitors and setting up a hotline or an internet wire, internet access. But the new system, definitely. I think we're very close to getting to GSA, so that we can start the procurement process. And once that happens, I'll definitely announce it. It will be a proud moment for GFD.
So would there be any additional costs, or that's already integrated into the system, and all you did is a plug-and-play type system?
I believe we've covered, as far as the total cost, we're talking about roughly $300,000 to $400,000 a year in the equipment lease and maintenance, and automatic, basically, upgrades if had to. So if it's not capable at this time, we do have a provision in there to allow it to be upgraded to that.
I see. Okay. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tonietta. Vice-Chair Tom.
Thank you, Chiefs Siniklis. I am certainly happy to hear that you're slowly making progress in, you know, getting the upgraded system in. Does that, does that system have the capability to receive text, 911 text messages?
Yes, the new system, yes. Basically without trying to select a vendor, so we're definitely chasing a next-generation E911 system, which has all those capabilities.
So this, so this new system that you're putting in does, will not have the capability to receive 911 text messages?
Yes, it will. The new system, yes.
It will?
Yes.
I mean, it's not going to be something that we have to turn around and then put out another bid to upgrade it?
No. We specifically stated in the specification that must be able to receive text. Yes.
Now, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand, well, I guess with the bill here, it's to give you the authority to go out and procure cameras, to, I guess, be able to provide surveillance in certain areas. Is that, is that, is that the way you understand the bill?
Well, I believe the way, the way the bill was written, I believe that was what, literally how it was stated in the bill. But I'd like to focus more on the authority of getting these cameras and access to it. I believe there is a follow-up rider bill that was also introduced that kind of addresses exactly what you're talking about, where we're developing public-private partnerships and allowing private organizations to purchase a camera, and then allow us to get access to it if it's facing a public setting.
But the way I read this is that it's, it's going to give you, the GFD, the authority to use 911 funds to go and procure cameras, surveillance cameras?
Right, to expend a portion of the funds if needed, yes.
Right. Do you really think you have that extra amount of funds available?
At this point, my focus is on the E911 system right now. And after that dust settles, then we can address whether we can afford to get cameras that we believe are best used in certain areas. If not, we can, we've always talked about revisiting the dollar surcharge. But like I've stated many times at this table, I'd like to see us first maximize the current dollar that we're using, make sure we're using everything, before we start talking about getting more.
And I want to commend you for your artful way of saying "thank you, but no thank you", because right now, we really need to focus on that 911 system and the way it was designed. And to allow the expenditure of funds for surveillance cameras kind of detracts from that, from really that focus, of which limited $911 are available to support even the fundamental mission of 911 and its requirements. So I'll commend you for your artful way of saying "thank you, but no thank you." Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Mary Torres?
Thank you, Chief Siniklis. I was thinking along the lines of my good Senator Ada. I'm just looking at your testimony, and there are two things, there are three things that struck me as we were looking at this. One is your emphasis on protecting the E911 fund, to ensure that it is appropriately used for its intended purpose. And you also, within the same paragraph, talked about the communication center and the progress that you're making towards realizing a new communication center for the E911 system and the radio system and the broadband network as well. You end the paragraph, second to the last, with stating that "any alteration to this course will set back years of hard work." And I think you were alluding to the control of the fund. But could you, do you believe that incorporating a surveillance component into the E911 system right now, as contemplated and getting it up to speed, is going to throw you back? The progress of realizing the communication center? Do you think that this is a throwback to that progress?
Not specifically, Senator. That's a very good point, and that's kind of why I opened up my testimony to try to set a baseline of what I was trying to say. A lot of times when we read these testimonies over and over again, we start, we come up with different thoughts of what was being said. But I think with my focus, and Senator Ada brought it up earlier, with my focus on getting this 911 system upgraded, it will not derail, I won't allow it to derail it. But I think that it's very important that the authority to use these surveillance cameras is explicitly stated somehow, some way, so that when the opportunity does come up and it becomes truly necessary to get it up and going, this will be one obstacle that is removed. Again, I don't think it will really detract that much, but I am concerned about allowing other, without trying to offend my fellow peers or others, I'm concerned that having too many people being, having authority over the fund is going to cause problems. And it has, I've, this is not the first, it's not the first try to get other people to, into the fund. And, you know, we've been very successful in protecting and making sure that it's, that it's to the original intent. And that's my, that's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. And I think, I think also, many members in the community, 911 is critical. They want to know that 911 is up, and that when they make, dial those three numbers, it's going to work for them, and help is on the way. So that's, that's the concern that I, you know, is at the foremost of my thoughts this morning.
And I appreciate that, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Escudan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Chief.
Morning.
You know, you mentioned a price tag of about $300,000 to $400,000 for equipment lease and maintenance of these cameras. Any, and again, I know that was kind of a ballpark figure that you threw out, that maybe a vendor threw out to you, but within that cost or that estimate, how many cameras are we talking about?
I would have to get back to you on that. I never really took the time to get into the cost of cameras. As this bill was brought up, we had a little, few other things happening. But I will get back to you on that, on, let's see what the cost of cameras. But my understanding at this point is a professional, high-end camera for public use, you know, all-weather cameras, run around for the entire system about $25,000 to $5,000. $2,500 to $5,000, I believe. I know the home security cameras cost around $250, really, for two cameras hooked up to your, and this is bought, of course, on base. But outside, it's probably just a little higher. And, but those are more low-end for home use, but as far as commercial cameras, with that need to withstand all kinds of weather, it probably costs upwards of that amount.
Okay. And again, I know this is, you're looking for the authorization, that when the time does come, that at least this would be in place. There are concerns, again, as stated by my colleagues earlier. However, within that cost of $300,000 to $400,000, does that include the cost of an outside vendor to be the ones monitoring the camera syst, or the system, or would it be an in-house job?
Okay. For our sake, when we have, when we get access to these cameras, we won't be monitoring it per se on a 24-hour basis. That's not, that's not what we do in the fire service. That would, that's where it turns into more of a surveillance type of thing, and that's a law enforcement aspect, which I would leave to GPD to answer that question. For us, it's when we need it, we'd be able to access it for the purpose of gaining information to provide for the, for the scene size up and extra safety measure for our responders. As an example, what we have today, or what could be happening today, is DPW has a project with, with traffic cameras, traffic light cameras. And we are in discussion with them to gain access to those cameras as needed. And really, all that requires is an IP address. And with our personnel, our 911 dispatchers in front of a computer, able to pull up an IP address and monitor, or not monitor, but take a look at real-time what's happening, for instance, a traffic accident, you know, we can already give a lot of information to our first responders before they even get there. That can actually happen already with our current system. And again, it's just an IP address.
Well, and that leads to the point of your recommendation, where we strike out the clause in collaboration with GPD and other public safety agencies. And basically, and that's as to the use of the funds for the camera project, it seems to me that, and correct me, please, Chief, if I'm wrong, that the Guam Fire Department really has no necessity in its core mission to have any kind of surveillance out there. This is more of a GPD function, isn't it?
Correct. And that's why I referred to the, I don't, I try not to use the word surveillance, surveillance is a law enforcement term, absolutely. For us, it's just more of an advantage point. You know, having, having eyes on the scene before we even get there is critical to any type of emergency, life-saving, critical mission. And so, I mean, it's basically, you know, in a military sense, providing intelligence for us before we send our guys in there. So I think it's very important to have access to these cameras if it's available, and the authority to do so.
Right. But I mean, it just seems to me, though, that if, and again, I'm not really sure how this works, it seems, I mean, the intent, I understand it, and I can applaud the author on that, and looking forward to how other jurisdictions use it, and how camera surveillance systems have been instrumental in helping the cause of GPD and identifying after the fact who may have been involved, what the, what the facts of the incidents that happened were, and things like that. But this is not really specifically a Guam Fire Department issue going forward. I think the only issue is because you manned the 911 system, and that's the reason why it's given to Guam Fire Department, or at least most of the responsibility for the surveillance cameras. Is that, is that an accurate statement, or am I off-base?
I'm not sure. I'm reading it as the responsibility of these cameras. I think it's just giving us access to it.
Right. But the funding will be, I mean, you're recommending that we strike out Guam Police Department, other public safety agencies, so bottom line, you will have full, GFD will have the full authority to implement it without anybody else.
As, as it is today.
As it is today.
And, but with collaboration, you know, should include them, yes.
It should. It should include them, but even in your recommendation, you're asking us to delete the word "shall" and replace it with the word "may." So there, in other words, it's, it's not mandatory that they be in there, it'll be to the call of Guam Fire Department, I would imagine.
Yeah. You know, my concern really, if you want to get to the core of my concern, is the portion of the funds. What I want to prevent is, you know, over 26 some mayors, GPD, DPW, Guam Visitors Bureau, all these different agencies putting, you know, giving me a list of cameras and saying, "fund it." And, and I'm going to be the bad guy, and I'm going to turn around and say, either 1, we can't afford it, or 2, somebody's more important than you. You know, I'll hold GPD more important over, I won't even say. But the thing is, is, you know, we're common sense people, we know what our mission is. We know what's important. And trust me, and like I've done in many of my projects, I've always collaborated with all stakeholders, and of course, with approval from the administration, to, in the best interest of the public and the community. So I will work with these people. I just, I just need to make sure that the fund is protected in a way so that we, we continue with our projects going forward, that this body has held me to on many occasions.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I'm, you know, I am glad. I did want to hear your real concern in going forward, and again, as expressed by my colleagues up here, the protection of the funds for the core mission of 911. Because then we would have to then ask, once, and that's why I asked how much it would cost, or how much it would cost another senator to ask that, $300,000 to $500,000, and that's only for a pilot project. We're not even talking total coverage. And you're right, if all these other agencies are involved, and you're the guy who's going to make that decision of where the camera's going to be placed, and really, it doesn't really address the core functions of your mission as the Guam Fire Department, then you're put on a hot seat for nothing. And I have concerns about that as well. That's all the questions I have now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Escudan. And Senators, thank you for your line of questions. Chief Siniklis, thank you for presenting testimony this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the discussion on the agenda for this morning. Just for the information to the public, we will recess until 2:00 PM this afternoon where the committee will be conducting an oversight hearing on the Guam Police Department. And the purpose of the oversight hearing is to listen to comments and testimony from the Chief of Police, the Colonel Maurice Leyama, Police Commander, and Captain Kim Santos, Special Project Manager for, for the Forensic Science Division, and any other related issues that may be brought up by members of the committee. So we will recess until 2:00 PM this afternoon. Thank you.